Welcome to the May Town Hall meetings that we're having. Probably all of you know my name is Mike Raff, I'm the Chairman of the Governing Board here at St. Peter. So, welcome, thank you for coming on this fine night and we're gonna get started right away. And I'm gonna hand it over to Pastor Greiner for an opening prayer and Bible study.
Yep, thanks Mike. Thanks friends for taking time tonight. Any of you who are watching on the livestream or watching when it's recorded, we're glad that you're joining us as well. And the livestream people have the option of turning in questions, I'm not sure if they will, but you're welcome. And Jason will feed them to us throughout the time this evening. So we want to try to make it easy for people who couldn't maybe get here physically to participate in the process as well. You're fortunate that we're in the Life Center tonight, not the Sanctuary. Because what I was gonna make you all do is actually get up and move to the first three or four queues. Because I don't know if you realize this, we livestream our Sunday morning church services now. And a number of people, whether they're homesick or traveling or can't get out of the house or something like that, they'll watch in. But they all observe, it looks like nobody's there. Because everyone likes to sit about five rows back and towards the back, so I was gonna use that as an exercise, just awareness. But here we are, we're here, there's a recital down there. So, I'd like to start out with just a quick reading from Proverbs, Chapter 4. I came across this during the day today and it kind of just was powerful for me. This is in a section entitled Wisdom is Supreme, starting at the end of the chapter at verse 20. It says, "My son, pay attention to what I say. Listen closely to my words. Do not let them out of your sight. Keep them within your heart, for they are life to those who find them, and health to a man's whole body. Above all else, guard your heart, for it is the wellspring of life. Put away perversity from your lips. Keep corrupt talk far from your mouth. Let your eyes look straight ahead. Fix your gaze directly before you. Make level paths through your feet, and take only ways that are firm. Do not swerve to the right or to the left. Keep your foot from evil." And obviously you know the Proverbs are swords of wisdom that God's people have savored and cherished now for thousands of years. Many are written by Solomon and by a few others. And what stood out to me in particular, as I read through this earlier today, was two things. Number one, the importance of listening to the words of God and letting them saturate deeply into our hearts and minds so that they come to dwell within us and then are expressed out through us. And just looking at all of your friends here tonight, I know that that's true for all of you where you have at some point in your life figured out that God's Word is powerful and effective and you appreciate hearing it, reading it, studying it, singing it, remembering it, praying it, and it just saturates you. That's what Solomon here in his wisdom invites us to assume as posterity. Says, "They are life to those who find them." And I thought that was just kind of stunning depiction, the word of God is life to those who find him. We were talking earlier in a staff meeting today about one of our high school students who's just gotten fired up for Bible reading. And is just excited about it, is trying to convince all these people around her to also start reading aspiraciously as she's reading. And it's just exciting to see the life stirring and pulsing and emerging to a young person who's discovered the power of God's Word. Above all else, guard your heart, for it is the wellspring of life. Remember how Jesus says, "Out of the heart come all evil thoughts and desires." Solomon goes into a man who comes out, that is concerning to God, right? And so, the point would be to say, when our heart is saturated and filled to overflowing with the Word of God, then good fruit comes. And what it also does is keep us focused on the right things. So he says, "Let your eyes look straight ahead. Fix your gaze directly before you." That stood out to me when I first read through today as well. Just the thought, that's easy to get distracted, isn't it? Right? Easy to get distracted. Easy to get kind of pulled down to this or here, or that or there. And what he says is, keep the main thing the main thing. Stay focused on the prize to which we are called, heavenward of Christ Jesus. Remember who you are, your identity as a baptized child of God, dearly loved by Him, made new in the image of Christ, and day by day being filled to fullness and being made new and being restored. And so we seek to stay focused on the Word of God, which is our life and is truth. It is the land to our feet and the light to our path, as the Psalmist calls us. So, let's pray about that. Jesus, today is a day that you have made, and so we thank you for it. We thank you for all the ways in which you've blessed us, indeed there are too many to count. We're gonna have some fun tonight celebrating the ways in which you have been at work in and around and among us as your people in this place, as well as considering some hopes and dreams and plans for the year and even the years to come. So we just pray that you would guide everything we do and say. Let those of us up front who are sharing information and ideas say so with such clarity that everyone would hear it and understand it quickly and not be confused by choices of words or by misunderstandings. Let us get to the heart of the matter and keep the main thing the main thing, the mission you've given us to lead people through full lives of Christ. We pray that for those who you have put us here to love and serve and to reach you or far from you, we pray that you would create a hunger and desire inside of us to do whatever it takes to reach them with the hope and the life that we have, this resurrection life we enjoy, which is so different from every other way in which humans seek to live. And we thank you for how you give it to us freely as a gift and then invite us to freely share it when we have freely received it. So we pray that you would remind us always of that and open our eyes to the opportunities to do that around us every day so that our work would not be a day for what God would be guided by Your Spirit and would be fruitful in Your kingdom. We pray this as we pray everything, in the name of Jesus and all God's people said it. Amen. Okay, here's our agenda, which we'll be walking through in our Town Halls as well as in our Voters Meeting. We have one more Town Hall meeting a week from tomorrow, midday one. You don't need to come to more than one, although I know some of you love, love, love to do that, so you're always welcome. But it'll be the same information, but just try and target people who maybe can't come out at night, okay? And it's all leading up to our regular Voters Meeting, which is on Sunday, May 19th. It'll be in the Sanctuary, I promise, at 12:30. So right after the last service, head that way if that's the service you attend. Or come back right after, noonish, noon 15, noon 30, we'll try to start on the dot so that we can move through it as quickly as possible without people getting off to the rest of the Sunday, okay? So, the big kind of subjects would be Governing Board nominations, I'll get back to that in just a moment. Vision update for what God is calling us to do here in this place. 10-10 update, our big dream for impacting the region with the gospel. Financial update, both in terms of report on this year as well as plan for next year. And then just kind of some closing thoughts and next steps. There are three action items that the congregation will be asked to take. You'll see the note in the agenda, voting for the election of governing board members. Voting to accept the offer from the congregation to renew the deed of their assets and property. I'll get into that a little bit more later on. And then affirming the budget approved by the board to present to the congregation, okay? So we're not gonna do any of that tonight, this is just information for discussion. But on Sunday, that's what we ask the congregation to do, okay? So, first off, Governing Board nominations. Currently, there are seven members of the Governing Board. Mike Raff has already introduced himself, he's Chair of the Governing Board. Jim Homely, Vice Chair, Laurel Van Meveren, they're emboldened on the screens because they are the two who are reaching the end of their term. And both have done a tremendous job serving on the board now for six years, so two consecutive terms, which is the maximum. And Jim as Vice Chair, Laurel as a member at large. The others currently serving, Janet Fisher, Carolyn Dolazel, Paul Hilgeman, and Tim Stogel. There are three individuals who have been nominated and who are willing to stand for election. Two of these three will ask you to vote for them. Prior to that meeting, we'll put out by email and then also in print at the meeting, a quick little biographical sketch and a picture of them so you can try to maybe have an idea of who they are exactly. I know it's a large congregation, so you don't know everybody, that's okay. They are Brittany Kester, Mike McLune, and Matt Meyer. Brittany Kester is a child and product of St. Peter, an alumna, is that the right way to say it? Of St. Peter, along with her brother Joel, her parents John and Linda, and have been members here for as long as I know, so a good long while, a couple decades at least. And Brittany is a young, single, female professional, which would be really an interesting addition to our board, could not have that kind of presence on the board up to this point. And so, she asked me, Pastor, when people say, you know, what are my qualifications and what am I bringing? I'm like, I don't know what I'm supposed to say. And I said, "Well, just talk about kind of your passion and your love and your commitment to ministry and the ways you've been involved and how she in the television, commercial, marketing type of industry is what she's been involved in. WGN and a few other enterprises in Chicago." So just as remarkable and interesting gifts. And as an alumna and young adult in the congregation, that would be a good ask. Mike McLune is, I think in his 50s. He has three children who are high school, college age. His wife is a local elementary teacher at public school. His children did not go to grade school here, I'm not sure they went to preschool or not, I'll have to double check on that. So, as a church member with children in the public schools, that would be also a nice and unique addition to round out the perspective of our board. He serves in the business world as a kind of CEO-level leader of small and mid-sized companies, if I'm using the right terminology, specializing in turning them around. So going in places that might need to be fixed up, cleaned up, redirected, and then turned around and sold, I guess is how it works in the industry. And so, his executive level leadership stands out in particular. Matt Meyer is, I believe, a fifth-generation St. Peter member, getting a nod, thank you. So he goes back, you know, quite a ways, his son Noah, who's in fifth grade, sixth-generation St. Peter family. Mike Greiner, I'm not sure what your kids are, you don't keep track, but there's a few still around who have been around for generations. That's an awesome thing. He and his wife Barb are very, very active in the church and the school in general. She is not technically a member, some may not even realize this. She's a member of the local Catholic parish with her mom and dad, attended for years. Her mom still attends, her dad has passed away. But she and her mom Doris, along with Matt and Noah, are probably in church more often than most members, right? So, just for whatever that's worth. And Matt's a high school teacher at Conant High School, I think that's in Chalmers, Concord State, somewhere in that area. His specialty is in students who have learning disabilities or other challenges, special needs. He won a few years ago, the Up for Downs Award, which was due to his unique and special focus on students with Down syndrome. And he also coaches cheater and pom and other things like that at Upland Grove High School, where his wife is in administration, a faculty member. So, I just say that to say, I know all these people well, they are all fantastic candidates for the congregation to consider. You would be asked to choose two out of three, and the two with the highest total voting would move on towards being one, okay? Any questions on the candidates at this point? Nope, okay. Vision update, we did this, I think, last time for the first time. And that was to just set the stage for some of the other things we're gonna talk about by looking back and celebrating all the things that we've seen God doing in the past year. And so, it's 6:30 in the evening, you probably went home and like I did, I had some chicken alfredo, it was delicious. It was good for my soul and for my constitution. But as a result, you might starting, be sort of kind of slow down and maybe thinking sleepy thoughts or something like that. So what we're gonna do is we're gonna invite you to celebrate with us each of the things I show. So I'm gonna introduce an idea, a slide, it's gonna have a picture and a little story. At the end of it, we're gonna kind of just applaud. And you could let out a cheer too if you feel so inclined by the spirit to do that, right? We'll see how it goes. Our staff earlier today got a first view of this whole presentation, and they did a good job. Took a little coaching, but there was one point in particular where it was powerful. So, A Night to Shine, we had our first A Night to Shine event. This is a party we throw for friends from community with disabilities. It was a huge success in the first year, tons of volunteers as you can see, dozens of community organizations. Eighty-seven special guests were honored in this room. And I remember watching them coming in from all their trolleys and their limos, and they were having a special day. How many of you were part of that in any way, shape, or form? Just a few hands, okay, awesome. We're gonna do it again next year, and Pastor Paul is pumped up about that. But let's go ahead and do our first round of applause. Staying on the top for Pastor Paul, the picture's a little bit fuzzy, but the impact is massive. Nine hundred and fifty hospital visits and shut-in calls in 2018, led by Pastor Paul. This is a team of his deacons. We also have Pastor Tom Noel, Phil Burning, Chuck Kittle, who are in on that. I did a few of them, but honestly the least, my focus is on other things primarily. But these friends, Dave Moss, I think you're one of our deacons, any other deacons, Dave Moss right here, who else? Henry in the back, alright, so three out of our friends that are up there are in the room. So let's just give thanks to God for these. Little story on that, I went to see someone at Lutheran Home. Others couldn't get there at that particular time, and so I had a little freedom, I went to see them. And they're relatively new to the congregation, I won't say who they are, but they're relatively new. And they were in rehab there, and the husband, the wife was in rehab. The husband came to me and just said, "Pastor," he had almost tears in his eyes. He said, "You just need to know that we love St. Peter, like we're glad we're here, but the care that we've received in the last few weeks." Couldn't even say it for us, just went like this. And it's not me at all, honestly, it's you guys, it's Pastor Paul, it's the team doing a great job. And we're looking to build on that in the future, so that's awesome. Youth Ministry, we had a great First Communion group this last time around. That's something we started a number of years ago, friends with students starting around fifth grade have the option, they're not required to. So some families are like, "No, no, no, we wait till after confirmation." We leave that up to moms and dads, grandmas and grandmas, aunts and uncles to decide. When are their kids ready? When does their family want to participate in communion for the first time? So we had, I think it was forty-five young people with parents, grandparents, participating in the instruction and preparation Monday, Thursday. The service was awesome because they were there. Some people ask, "Why don't you have them all go up as a class or all go up on their own?" And the answer to that is, this is something that is primarily in the hands of the family. And we wanna remember that and elevate that and highlight that. Because we do a brief little instruction here, some touches along the way, because mom and dad, grandpa, granda, aunts and uncles are really the primary influences. And so we want them to take communion with their families. And so, we say, "Sit wherever you want, right? You did this as a group, but it's really a family-based thing." And that's why we invite the families to participate in the full instruction experience. This is in this room, so it's fortuitous that we're here tonight, so God arranged that. And you can just imagine, we had a big circle in here with these students and their families. We had them close by gathering around them, praying for them, asking God's blessing on them as they take this big step in their faith journey and then continue to grow as they go throughout middle school and into high school, okay? Around the summer year, we do confirmation check-ins, and that's kind of a newer thing, last couple of years. What that is, is I sit down along with Mrs. Harmon, with every eighth-grade student who wants to sit down and talk to us about how their faith life is going, what they're doing to grow spiritually, what their questions and concerns are going off into high school. And these are some of my most joy-filled, fruitful conversations. I had one last week with a young gentleman, doesn't go to school here anymore, he did, but then moved to a public school for middle school. And we presented him a study Bible. We do that for all the eighth graders, whatever school they go to around this time of year. And Mrs. Harmon had written his name and his life verse, his confirmation verse in there. And we kind of laid it out for him and showed it to him, and he and his dad got so excited because when his dad went for confirmation, he got a Bible just like that. And so he could talk about how this is what he got around about that time and how it's been helpful to him. And I brought mine out from the shelf and said, "This was my confirmation Bible." And so we just had a great, spirited, filled conversation around that. That's all wrapped around what we do in middle school with C4 and high school with Oasis. One of the things Chris had wanted to point out that's been really exciting has been the high schoolers leaning back into the middle schoolers to teach and mentor them. And that's something that we value very highly, making disciples who can make disciples ongoing, right? So giving leadership to people even when they're young, after they've learned that they're ready to share with them. And that's something we value and we're excited to celebrate. So, let's give thanks to God for our. Kids World next week, we have eighteen trained mentors who are deployed to three different schools. And a fourth is coming, South Middle School. That started at Westgate Elementary, I was there today, meeting with a young student. The faculty tells me that my friend there takes up more of the administration time than any other student in the school. Just needs extra attention. And it's not like he's doing anything wrong, he's a good kid, he just needs a little extra attention. So, I go over every week and have lunch with him, and I introduce him to the game Exploding Kittens. Is anyone familiar with this game? Don't worry, no cats actually get harmed, but it's a fun game, it's popular now. And the goal is not to get the Exploded Kitten card, but I'll just stop at that. Anyway, and now what he does is he invites all of his classmates who are willing to come and give up their lunch break and recess break to come hang out with me. And the deal is, I don't talk about Jesus directly, but if they ask or bring anything up, I can always answer. But what I do get to talk to them about a lot is character and how to treat one another. So one example is, sometimes a kid will want to play a card and then want to take it back, you know? And that would be breaking the rules, and so what I introduce to them is say, "Hey, should we give this friend grace?" What was that? Grace would be giving something they don't deserve, you know? And so, without talking about Jesus, I get to introduce the concept of grace and show adversity. And they start to use those words and start to shape their lives, and it's been a beautiful thing to watch. So that's just one little example of what I'm able to see and do at Westgate. We're excited about our partners there, as well as at Windsor Elementary. We brought it back here to St. Peter as well, and are looking for ways to kind of bring some of that same process to some of our friends here who would appreciate that special one-on-one relationship. And we have two students, I think, at South Middle School next year that have moved up into that, that we're hoping to be able to continue to mentor there as well. So, Jill Sheets-Johansson really drive this, that's really powerful, let's give thanks to God for kids here. Summer Camp, our numbers for this summer are just fantastic, over three hundred and twenty. This is one out of three summer camps that run simultaneously out of St. Peter, I don't know if you know that. You may see signs down in Oakton for Galileo, that's a community partner organization that focuses on advanced challenge, STEM-type stuff, I don't even know the right way to say it, but that's kind of its own niche market. We have our own PDO summer camp, and then this is for our regular summer camp. All tool, we're at a point now where we probably have more kids in our building in the summer than we do during the schooling, okay? Eighty percent of them in just our summer camp don't have any connection to St. Peter. Which means our largest mission field is for ten weeks in the summer when parents say, "Hey, we need help, can you help us with our kids?" So we're gonna look at ways to build on that. I'm gonna be teaching a number of the chapels over the course of the summer, and the rest of our ministry team is gonna lean into that as well. We see this as a huge opportunity for reaching new people, and so we're just excited about that. So, let's give it up for our. Community, it's ours, we saw, we love the opportunity to partner with families on Sunday mornings. Small group leaders discipling children every week. And our focus is on developing those leaders who can develop other leaders or disciples who can make disciples. And so you see that theme throughout. And then also a follow-up opportunity for parents to engage their children's faith through things we send home, take home with the kids that they can talk about. So let's give thanks for our. And our Help USA troops, Chris is in the room here, thanks for your help with that aspect where we look for friends and partners in the community that we can run alongside and bless and help. And the Help USA troops is an organization started here out of Arlington Heights. But the owners, or I don't know what you'd call that, the founders, leaders, they said, "We've never met St. Peter before." Like, we've seen it, we know about it, we just never have been invited in. And so, we somehow or another, I don't even know how we found the connection, but somebody said, "Like, if we do this," and I'm like, "Community organization, doing good, that we can bless, and our people will be eager to serve, that's a win, let's do it," right? And so, what they said afterwards was, "We were just overwhelmed by just the love and care and the support and generosity of the St. Peter family." We didn't even know we were here, but now we do, and that's just amazing. So, thanks Chris, and thanks for our. So thanks, Chris, and thanks for our, uh, many of you probably participated in this. Almost four hundred, uh, books were handed out here. Uh, the rest of what we have, we're gonna pass on to other churches who are gonna, uh, follow our lead and do the same thing. We had two hundred and sixty-five daily text subscribers. That was a text message to your inbox. I know I got it, helped keep me on track. That was awesome. Kristen Harmon, uh, organized that for us. Brian and Jill and Sarah and others on the team helped provide, uh, the leadership for this. And, uh, it was, it was probably of all the dozen years I've been here, one of the best kind of times of focus specifically on Bible reading, right? And getting people intentionally into the reading of Scripture. We've done other things and other things have been good too, but this, just for me, as I look back, uh, I saw more energy, enthusiasm and excitement around, uh, forty days in the Word of God, and I'm excited to see for years to come what the outcome of that will be. So let's give thanks to God. Chris is Easter, or just uniquely blessed this season? Uh, I don't know if you noticed it. If you happen to find yourself in this room on Sunday, and I'm looking around and saying, some of you maybe, most of you maybe not, uh, we had five hundred people in this room in that room. Uh, we ran absolutely obliterated our chair column. And so we had two hundred people standing, uh, and they all were nice. Because that's not the kind of, uh, overflow we actually want. We had planned for like three hundred-ish, maybe three fifty tops, and God bless it. And, uh, uh, we, uh, we had a lot of fun. You can see the children's Christmas services, uh, just uniquely blessed, uh, and, uh, it was an opportunity for us to bring the gospel message to lots of people who don't always come to church, right? And it was an opportunity for St. Peter to be at its best. So thanks to all of you for the roles you played in all of that, for being here and being present, it was awesome. Let's give thanks to God for, uh, and here's the one, uh, Bob, you're like, "Oh, come on." Right? But, uh, we just wanted to highlight, Bob Vossel, he's in the back, he's got a comfort dog. He is, he is in this building as a volunteer, uh, probably more hours than most hates him, right? And just gives and gives and gives. It's your heart, it's your passion, it's your love. Uh, we wanna just recognize that and, uh, and say thank you, Bob, for your years of dedication and hard work, especially in these last few, uh, helping make our facilities some of the best that they've ever been, along with Jim and the rest of the team. So thank you, Bob. We were doing our staff version of this earlier, he just happened to come up our, oh, exactly at this time. He's like, "What's going on in there?" Right? And, uh, so the staff was able to love up Bob. Thanks. Uh, we have others, we can't show everybody. This is some of our lawn and garden crews, so we've got Cheryl Boltman, Paul Schmitz, Dennis Carlsen, and, uh, the stunningly unique Steve Von Beckman, uh, who loves that. She and I saw that on, uh, earlier this week. And, uh, just giving all their time and energy to make our campus beautiful, right? And, um, I was talking with Jim after our earlier meeting and, and we were just talking about how, uh, when you, I'm talking about all of you in the room here today who have given your time and energy in some way, shape or form to help ministry run here, you don't necessarily always realize the impact that you have, right? One of the things he said is, "Micah, when I get a team like this that can just go and do things to help make this place run and beautiful, then I don't have to do that and I can go over here and I can run this electrical conduit wiring solution and reroute this and do the things that he's uniquely especially talented to be able to do, or kind of run the whole thing." And so sometimes you just are, you know, putting a shovel in the ground or pulling weed or handing out a bulletin or, you know, putting out candles or whatever. It doesn't seem like much, but I'm saying that altogether, it becomes much. Does that make sense? And so the ways that all of you, I'm just living in the room, I know every single one of you gives and gives and gives and gives and gives, I just want to say thank you. You're maybe not on the screen, uh, but you're here and you're noticing your love, so I just want to say thank you for that. So let's say, say thank you to all of you. Uh, our school, uh, we just absolutely love our school. Hundred and fifty years plus of, uh, unparalleled Christ-centered education. Uh, it's valued to this ministry and to this community. We are, "Hans from the feet of Jesus" was our theme this year. We went through a rigorous state recognition and accreditation process and did just fine with all that. We had a wonderful gala event at the Cotillion, uh, that's a place, right? Yep. Uh, and, uh, that was a whole lot of fun. Thanks to all of you who were there, part of that. Sixty-two thousand dollars raised. We're gonna invest that in, uh, a brand new, what do we call it? Innovation lab? Uh, so think like computer lab, that was like nineteen nineties, right? And so two thousand and tens, uh, it's like everything's computers, but it's, it's towards student-based, project-based learning that allows them to be creators and innovators, leveraging technology. So, uh, it'll be exciting to see. We don't know exactly where it's gonna go or how it's gonna shape up, as we'll see later on. Uh, we have lots of demands in facilities and opportunities, so we're just trying to figure all that out. Uh, we also are gonna say goodbye to our dear, dear friend, Principal Bruce Ruby. Bruce, you may remember, came on staff exactly the same time I did, right? We had a Californian luau welcome party in the MAC. Some of you remember that, you probably bought Hawaiian shirts to wear for that, maybe you haven't worn them ever since, but they're back in style. So if you kept them, you're good. I did not. My wife stripped all my Hawaiian shirts after we got married from my closet. So, uh, the, uh, but Bruce, uh, we're celebrating all throughout the end of this year, and he has just a masterful job. His, his passion, his wisdom, uh, is just, uh, a blessing. Uh, and then we're welcoming in Team Hydaman, who have already bought a house in the neighborhood, Walnut, just south of Thomas. And so they already own the house. Some of us are helping kind of make sure that it, you know, is in good shape, but so there may be an opportunity in the month of May before they arrive, they're gonna come here at the end of this month, to, uh, to help, you know, stock it, prep it, whatever. So just keep your eyes and ears open for that. Uh, they're gonna be a tremendous blessing. Jonathan, his wife Mel have three boys, the youngest of which Oliver was just born two, three weeks ago. Yeah? And so, uh, so, uh, we're glad to have them here. Uh, we're gonna be baptizing little Oliver, I think, at opening chapel, uh, in school next year, which is gonna be a lot of fun. So, uh, let's hear it for our school and all the parents and all the students. Right? So isn't that a great way? We don't often take time to celebrate all the good stuff, guys. We could put even more on there, but I know that there's a limit, right? Because there's also other stuff we need to get to. So I'm gonna hand it over to Brian to talk a little bit about some discipleships, work we've been working on the last few weeks.
It is good to celebrate, isn't it? Uh, I'm convinced in ministry, we kind of get focused on what's in front of us and don't often enough take time to step back and see all that God has done and He is doing. Uh, so that's a great thing to celebrate all that. A quick update on discipleship and just what we're doing with that here at our church and school. Uh, this is some language that we've been using more over the last year and want to bring that back to you now. Um, what we wanna do is connect every person to a community of faith and mission here at St. Peter. So we're starting to look at the leadership at everything we do in the church, in the school, every event, every program, every ministry, and looking at how can we get it toward the center of those three things, right? So what we mean is, we want each person connected to a biblical community where they're receiving encouragement, prayer, fellowship, support. We want each person growing actively in their faith and their walk with Jesus. And then we want each person connected to Jesus' mission and living that out in their everyday life. So you'll see much more about that to come. Uh, one of the ways we're doing that is by breaking down our church into a neighborhood focus. So this has been kind of a long time coming. It, it's took a while to get it going, but actually this month, we're gonna have a meeting with some potential lead families from different neighborhoods with the goal of connecting to other St. Peter families who live close to them. So starting with, maybe they don't even know some other families, but they live close to them and they're also a St. Peter family. So how can we get those people connected? And then eventually look at, how can those people join together and join in on what Jesus is, is already doing in their neighborhood and do good in their neighborhood? So this is step one toward, uh, getting people more connected, having people a part of those biblical communities. So look for more on that to come.
Uh, the next thing, and then after this, we'll pause and take some questions you may have, would be kind of campus plans, master plans. This is something that we've talked about, uh, several times over the years. Uh, and, and many of the major needs you already know, because you've been to these meetings before and you know that we've been looking at them, working on some of them, planning some of them. So what I'm writing is not, or sharing is not brand new to you. So the west parking lot in particular needs a major upgrade. Our sanctuary beams and the roof itself are over sixty years old. There's structural issues, there's leaking issues. I was talking with Jim Thomas about this in particular afterwards, and, uh, he said, "Micah, as soon as we start trying to fix gutters and downspout and things, we're gonna start cutting up into the roof itself and then it'll be patching old roof and new roof. And we're gonna get to a point where you're gonna say, 'This is sixty years old, you know, it's time to, you know, slick your roof at home.'" You know, and it has a lifespan, the same's true for ours. And so, uh, we're taking a close look at that. Uh, the organ is also a sixty-some-year-old instrument and, uh, and it needs major upgrading and retrofitting so it can continue to thrive as an instrument in that room for generations to come. Every fifty, sixty years, we need to put some significant resources into it in order for it to operate and peak in, uh, performance. There's a host of other infrastructure issues, uh, and the numbers we're putting up here are ballpark figures, by the way, just to say, these are big ticket items, okay? And you can see, we could easily spend two, two and a half million dollars or more just fixing stuff that needs to be fixed, okay? As we've gone through this, we've also said, while we're doing that, we also want to be thinking ahead to what else do we wanna accomplish to position the ministry to thrive in the years to come? And so last year, we shared with you some conceptual drawings. Uh, those are still on the table as an option, but we're, we've been sifting through and prioritizing some of your feedback over the course of last year. One of those being the urgency and the importance of building capacity in the ministry here for extending our early child care down to six-weeks-old childcare. Uh, I was talking with Michelle Fritz earlier today, and she says, "Micah, you can't get that suited up." Like, every family I know is like, "When are you gonna do that?" Because we'd love to have our whole family here and not have to go here and there and everywhere. From us, you've heard me say this before strategically, uh, if we can start the relationship with the families two years earlier, that's a win, because we know it's the relationship built over time that draw people into communities of faith and mission, right? It doesn't happen automatically, but that gives us the best environment to invest in that. And so it makes all the sense in the world. The problem is, we literally don't have an extra room to add much of anything. Uh, and so that reality is still before us. In the last year, then what we've focused on is, okay, where and how and how big would we need to build childcare to serve our needs and move into the future? And then also, we discussed a few last year, shouldn't we ever consider selling off parts of our property that aren't in the optimal positions in order to reinvest that in some of these major facility upgrades we talked about? And a clear answer from leadership from youth congregation was not interested in selling off an inch. And, uh, we, we all agreed with that, and we thought it was due diligence to think that through. In the course of that, we said, "Hey, what if we could convince the village to give us Highland, I'm sorry, yeah, Highland, between Clarinet and Allen." You guys remember that? People were like, "Are you kidding me with everything about that?" Uh, and we said, "Well, you don't know until you ask." Right? Uh, so we kind of vetted the idea, went to the village, and I guess what they said?
No.
Not really interested. So not unsurprising, and yet it's important to think that through, because if we could have, that could have potentially shifted substantially the future development of the campus. Uh, so we feel fairly confident. It's not a closed door bolted shut, you know, but it's pretty much, pretty close, okay? So what we're looking at now then is saying, okay, in this next twelve months, uh, here's what we need to do to be able to add capacity and improvements in these kind of areas, uh, childcare, parking, accessibility, security throughout the campus, more space for community to happen. We, we know our common space is really squeezed right now. Uh, centralized offices and meeting spaces. Uh, for church members, if you come here during the school day and you wanna have a meeting, uh, there are exactly two, I think rooms right now, maybe three, that you could potentially use during the school day, right? Even then, you gotta go through layers of security to get there or staircases, and we're in one of the two, which is highly, uh, utilized, right? And so that's great. Means we have a lot of great programs and activities going on, but it, it limits some of what else we can do for Bible studies during the week and meetings and so forth. So, uh, we also are desperately short on storage, uh, because we've turned every closet we can get our hands on into an office or a classroom, right? Uh, so that's something we're, we're mindful of. Uh, the MAC itself, especially the floor, needs some updates. And one thing that's often come up is, "Hey, we've got this mortgage out there, uh, is that a concern to us? Um, how are we doing on that?" And we're servicing it just fine through our normal operations, right? So it's not burdening us, but it does cost upwards of a quarter million dollars a year of ministry dollars that could otherwise be spent somewhere else. And so that's something to be thoughtful and mindful of. So take all that up together, and the board has said, "Hey, here's the next steps we're gonna take in two thousand and nineteen." We have already formed a task force led by a board member, Tim Stoker, who has expertise in this area to kind of drive some of this process forward and keep it moving. Uh, the next step would be hiring a capital campaign consultant. Why is that? Well, we need to raise some of the funds to do some of this work, right? Or raise all the funds to do all this work, if I can restate it that way. Uh, we have vetted a number of consultants that are out there. There's one in particular that larger LCS churches have been, have been using. Uh, it's called James Klote and Associates, K-L-O-T-E. If you want to Google him, he's a very, very nice guy. I've met him on a few occasions. Uh, and there are a few others we're looking at, but Klote and Associates, uh, has a unique campaign style that consistently delivers results, uh, in the range of three to five times regular, uh, annual contributions. And so that would mean for a church like St. Peter would be a capital campaign in the range of six to ten million dollars, right? Now, you first look at that and you're like, "Here?" Right? Uh, but again, I talked to a dozen of my friends who have used them in the last five years at three to five times their regular giving is what they're consistently seeing. And part of the reason is, uh, that they deploy essentially a full-time employee to this congregation, should we contract with them, to work and guide the process. And they, uh, help us get set up to set, sit down and have a conversation with every single member and family who's willing to let me or the consultant or another one of our leaders or trained team of lay leaders, uh, visit them, explain the vision, the strategy, the plan, and, and then make them ask to say, "We'd be part of this big campaign." We've done these with pastors, so you guys are not unfamiliar with them, looking around the room. And, uh, you know that in the past, what have we, uh, been able to bring in in terms of big campaigns? You guys remember? Plus minus two million each time, twice, right? Over the course of six years. So that would be one times our regular giving. So it would be a significantly different outcome if we were able to accomplish this, and it would get us a long ways towards a lot of what we have now, okay? Personally, you've heard me say this before, one of my hopes would be is that we don't take out additional financing to do any of this work, right? I'm comfortable with what we do have now. If, in this process, we wanna pace some of that down, fantastic. That just frees up the ministry for other things, but I would not wanna take out additional financing to get it done. Uh, that's just me as your pastor saying that personally, okay? Uh, the sooner we can get out of that kind of debt, the better, is what I'm saying. So, the board will vet this, will choose a consultant. They will conduct an initial feasibility struggle, struggle? Already? Study, where we will have a series of cottage town hall-type meetings to talk about specifically the plans, the opportunities that are before us. Get a lot of feedback from all y'all. And then that will help shape and guide what the actual plan becomes. Then that'll reach a point where we say, okay, we think we have this level of support. We'll bring it to the congregation at a voters' meeting later this year to say, yes, let's go ahead with an actual capital campaign, is what our Bible study requires. Okay, so all of you will get a chance to say yea or nay to that step of the process. That moves the consultant from feasibility phase to implementation phase. And altogether, that would run four to six months, depending on how fast we want to go. So, that'll be a powerful and exciting season. We are in the process of vetting the consultants now and hope to make a decision on which one we want to bring in to do that feasibility work, even starting this summer. The goal then would be having a campaign underway and the work starting around about this time next year. That would be a little earlier, so maybe a little bit later, it's based on all this stuff coming together. And the exact scope of it would be based on the feedback from you, the congregations. You've heard some of these plans and the opportunities, and what the spirit is kind of directing us all to say, here's what we want to do next, okay? Altogether, I'd say we have 20 to 25 million dollars of work we could do to make this campus great for the next 50, 60 years. We're not gonna get all that done now, right? So we'll look at it, we'll plan for it, and we'll do it over time as it happens. Okay? I'm gonna pause right now and just say, I've given you a lot of information. Brian shared some. Any questions you have, any thoughts, anything you need clarified at this point? Yeah, clear?
What are some of the collaborations that you have used?
Klot and Associates? Let me pull it up real quick. I can list a few off the top of my head. Concordia in Kirkwood, Missouri. Scott Seidler is the pastor there. Risen Savior in Chandler, Arizona. Christ's Greenfield Church in Gilbert, Arizona. St. John in Cypress, Texas. Trinity in Lisle. I wanna say Cross Doorville, St. John Rochester, I thought was one of them, but don't quote me on that one. I've got a whole listing of them, that if you wanted me to, I could kind of fire them up. Yeah, so, so I sent all my friends who are pastors there an email, said, give me the down and dirty. Like, did you like it? Would you do it again? You know, did it meet your expectations? And almost without hesitation, they all said, this has been the most powerful capital campaign consulting experience we've had. There's one or two churches for whom the personal home visits and specific asks felt a little too high-pressuring for some people in their congregation, and they have been a cultural thing there. And so that's something we'd be managing and watching out for. There's a few ways you could do that, where you don't overwhelm someone by saying, hey, give something that they obviously wouldn't even think or dream or be capable of doing. And so we'd, that's one little bit of feedback. There's a higher cost upfront, but when you see three to five times, or as many as seven, 10 times in some other places, not the places I know, but in some of the churches we've worked with, then by percentage, it ends up being significantly less than what we've experienced in other times. So, okay? I'm not saying that's absolutely definitively the one we're gonna go with. I'm just saying that that's a leading contender among the few, and we're gonna vet that out and make that decision soon. Yeah?
I have a couple of questions, Paul. How could you approve a budget when your principal's not here?
We're not to the budget yet, so we'll get to that in a minute. But the principal, Jonathan Heidman, we've been in dialogue with about certain aspects of the plan in the future that, and we've given him opportunity to speak into it, weigh into it. He said, I know you guys, you guys are smart, you've done a good job. Check it with me if you want to. I'll give you feedback if I want to, but just go ahead and get it set up, and I'll take it from there. So, I'll come back to that a little bit later on. Mercy Brian will wait and assess the budget in just a few minutes. So we've invited him into the process, and he's satisfied with that. Yeah?
Do the screen that said campus plans?
Yeah.
Is that, is that focusing strictly, because it showed up there, just the church campus? Are there things in there, school-wise, since school is part of the campus? Or is that a whole separate? Because I'm seeing all the, like, the items that need, you know, updating and stuff. And I'm just, you know, as a school parent and a church member, I'm thinking both sides, right? Like, how does that play into budget, and is that a whole separate?
Yeah, yeah, no, good question. So, the question is, in these priorities, how does school, as it currently is, kind of factor into that? And what I would say is, from a leadership and planning perspective, we're always looking at the whole. So it may not always come through in lists and numbers and things you say, but I just want you to hear that from my heart. So we're always looking at the whole and trying to make the whole experience better. The, for one example that we've considered would be, if we were to build childcare space around the south end of our campus currently, which would be around ours all towards behind the map over what's the current service drive, right? Which is one good option potentially. If we were to go ahead and do that, it might as well build two or three stories and essentially start to migrate our school over into brand-new facilities, right? And then eventually come back and address either retrofit or remove some existing facilities that are reaching the end of their useful life, right? And then there's a debate we have ongoing, what's the end of their useful life? And what's good stewardship? And what do we need to clean them? And what do we need to replace? So that's the dialogue we're having ongoing. And the exact outcome of it will be largely driven by the feedback from all the conversations we'll have in these feasibility conversations. As well as, at the end of the day, we're gonna rank them priority-wise. We're gonna look at our budget, and we're gonna say, okay, how much can we get done now, right? And so, a year from now-ish, that willing, if things go according to plan, we'll have all those down, and we'll say, okay, we're gonna get this done. The, if we go back one, HVAC plumbing, windows, Wi-Fi technology, that's everything, right? And so, one example would be, our classroom windows are single-pane glass. Sometimes students and teachers put things on the glass with, like, tape. The problem is, the glass is 60-some years old, and when you push on the glass, it breaks the glazing, and the windows need to be replaced or re-glazed, okay? And this just happens, just through normal use, like, nobody's doing something stupid and inappropriate. They're, they just wouldn't think that the glass is that old in that fraction, right? But really, all of that should be double or triple-pane glass. That's high-energy efficient for all sorts of reasons. But we're trying to determine, do we replace all the glazing and glass with better glass for the future? Or would that be an investment in a building that needs to be replaced eventually? So that's part of the dialogue, yeah? You'll see later on, from the gala proceeds, that, or we referenced this earlier, the Innovation Lab that that's gonna go and fund. We don't know exactly where that's gonna be, based on some other things that we're gonna try to do this summer to get ready for childcare already next year. So we're gonna start to try to position for that if we can, isn't it?
Is there any way that any of us families can have any kind of communication through email?
Not now.
Do you know what?
A way is here, which will be in June.
Is there a time that he's gonna meet with families, like, have, like, an open house where we have any questions to speak up for schools?
I'm not asking that specifically, but my assumption would be is that... Yeah, my assumption, the question is, when the new principal gets here, how are our families gonna get to know him, talk to him, share some ideas and perspectives, maybe concerns they have, so he can be brought up to speed? My expectation would be is that, over the summer and then into the next school year, he's gonna be listening a lot. He's pretty good at that. And then we'll help him navigate and say, hey, have these conversations over here, have those over there. And then, so, what I'm saying is, I don't know specifically, but knowing him, I would imagine that would be a top priority for him as he gets up to speed, okay?
One of our least expensive ways to increase our childcare, as far as square footage, is to look at an area mall. I mean, there are so many places looking dirt-cheap. It could become one of our 10 and 10.
10 and 10, yeah.
Because it gives us an outreach. It would, we could put it in another community. It gives us a space to put our sign-up. It says, St. Peter Lutheran Church and School, or just School. It's the least expensive way to go about doing this and harvesting these families, bring them to a full life in Christ, and then direct them over to this campus. But we're not adding square footage at a considerable cost.
Yes, I hear you. And that's gonna segue us well in the 10 and 10 update, which I'm gonna go into next. What I'll say, Bob, is, I see both as being options we need to have on the table and considering. I see adding square feet as being a longer-range view that we're gonna wanna look at doing for a variety of other reasons as we look to address campus needs and future growth. What I'm gonna say is, we're gonna be working on plans this summer to make space, shuffling around, rearranging internally, something that goes on right now, to see if we can't get the rooms ready, so we can get the CFS in and get that process started here. Because as soon as we do, we can, day one, have rooms built. We're convinced, out of our current family base here. So, that's gonna be a little tight, because as you know very well, there's not a lot of dead space around, empty space. So, we're looking at how to do that wisely. But I'll take, you know, take that to the team and say, hey, you know, we should be looking at... I drive past three car dealerships every day to and from, or at Dundee Road by Buffalo Road High School that have been sitting empty since 2008, right? And every time I drive past them, I'm like, all right, yeah, what do you want to do with those, right? The village doesn't seem to know. So, it hasn't come up to anything yet. We've talked about a few things for that, just because I happen to drive by it. But there's lots of space available, as you're saying. And there's lots of others who are entering at that market. There are some other things, though, that could make even more sense earlier than I want to get to next, if that's okay? Yep, so, 10, yeah, Jason?
One quick online question. What will the, Brian, what will the scope of the neighborhood lead or be? How many leaders are you seeking, and in what neighborhoods?
So the question was, what's the scope of the lead family? What are we asking them to do? We've invited about 50, just to start, and that was really hard to do, to try to narrow down a list to 50, because there's so many good families out there. Initially, what we'd be asking them to do is just look for ways to connect with other St. Peter families around them. So we'll provide them with a list, with a map of who lives close to them. And then over the summer, can they do maybe one or two relational gatherings at a park or at their house, and just connect and start to develop these relationships that can turn into more of these communities of faith and mission? So that's the initial hope. And then from there, it can move more towards serving the community, looking at one of the needs of the community, how can they do that, and serving them together.
So we have building relationships with their friends and neighbors that may, they may or may not know. Sharing a meal or some sort of common experience. It might be smores over a bonfire, it might be, you know, juice boxes at a park. It might be dinner at the house, like, depending on their comfort level. We're gonna help coach them through that. Praying for their neighborhood is a high, high value for me. When I go for a run in my neighborhood, I love to do that, because it helps me stay ahead of me. And I love to just think about who lives in these houses, who drives down these streets, who goes to these schools, and be praying for God to open up doors for contact with them. Our family vision, yeah, we'll get to it, Mike. Our family vision, St., for Team Greiner, is to be the brightest house on our block. And so what that means is, we are trying to be as invitational to our neighbors as possible we can. And we're inviting them to our home for meals almost every week, into our backyard for parties. We have a Christmas party every year with 30, 40 people from our neighborhood. We have an Easter vigil on the Saturday before Christmas, where we gather together and we read the Easter story and we pray together. And what our philosophy is, is that there are a lot of people in our neighborhood who, for various reasons, will never go to church, and may never go to church. So what we did when we moved in the neighborhood is, we brought Christianity, you know, church people to them, right? And so, they don't know it, but what we're doing is, we're trying to give them an example of what a follower of Jesus looks like, because they may not otherwise know what a disciple of Jesus says and does. A neighbor down the street came to me the other day. I was pulling Daniel out, and she said, hey, I've got a tool that you can use, you don't have to bend down. And I'm like, I'm almost done, but thanks, maybe I'll get it when I do my neighbors, because I take care of her lawn. And the, she takes care of our kids, so just so you know, I'm not gonna come to your lawn. But she takes care of our kids, she feeds us, I take care of her lawn, it's like a, it's good. And, and she said, you know, your family is like a robot family. And I'm like, okay, thank you, I think. What do you mean? And she said, well, it's like, you guys are just, everything's always good, you know? And your house looks good, and your kids are well-behaved. I'm like, I'm here to tell you, my friend, it is not always all good. Like, we're just normal people, just like you. But what I'm saying is, she was noticing something different, right? And she said later on, you know, I'm a lifelong Catholic, never gonna change, but if I weren't, I'd come to your church, right? Why am I saying that? I'm not trying to brag. What I'm saying is, we have intentionally sought to live as open and available as we can to the people who are nearest to us. That's what we feel God calling us as a family to do, so that they have a chance to see what followers of Jesus actually say and do on a day-to-day basis. And we love them, and we serve them, and we share life with them. Some of them have started to become more active in their faith. Atheists have started praying when we get together and have meals, which is always an interesting thing to observe. They don't know it, but they're doing, but they're actually praying when they join in. And, and they're finding community they didn't have before. So, community, faith, mission, that's an example. And we've been doing this for 10, 12 years, right? So we're seeing for, for a decade, the best of what we're doing, is we're going to others who think might be excited, might get involved in that, might be willing to try starting something and building some intentionality that we can then build from from there on.
So, so the big-picture dream then becomes, what if we had 50 neighborhoods or more, where our people are mobilized to do that same thing and reach out to those around them with Jesus love? It's pretty exciting.
Yeah, Mike? So, our hope would be that we would be doing major improvements or repairs this time next year. And then in the meantime...
A whole 'nother year of the...
Yeah, yeah, so in the meantime, we'll be trying to pass some hot balls and make it passable for this season.
And then, do you have a ballpark for the consultant's fee? And do they get a percentage of?
What I, I don't remember it off the top of my head. What I know is that it's, for this last church I talked to, it worked out to about 3% to 4% of their total revenue from campaigns. Whereas previously, when they used, like, we did LCF, it was more like 5%. Okay, it was a lower number, but the outcome was lower, right? So it was like this, if that makes sense, in terms of higher upfront costs.
Do they get a percent higher return?
I don't think it's set up as a return. I think it ends up being a set fee, I believe. And I've not looked at that lately, directly myself, so I can't say more than that off the top of my head. So I don't think it's a percentage upfront, based on what they think you're, it's, this is what it costs to have a professional consultant 24/7, six months with you, whatever that the duration turns out to be. And then what it's showing is that it produces consistently.
And are we gonna get those positives and negatives of what that company's got? Because it's great if you could tell us all the great things it do. And then, you know, 5, 8, 10%, is what... But what did the ones that didn't work out feel about it?
Yeah, so that's why I went to, the question is, feedback, positive and negative about capital campaign consultants. And there's one in particular that I was referring to earlier. So I went to all the ones that I knew who had done campaigns with them and gotten positive and negative feedback, and filtered that to the board for their awareness. And then we shared as much of that as makes sense to the congregation when that time comes. But the concerns would be, is the pressure, are the pressure tactics too high? So adjust for that in your congregation. There are a couple ways you could do that. And, and just be aware, there is a high upfront cost, but it pays off a lot. Those would be kind of two points of concern, critical feedback that I've heard. The other thing was, man, if we could just hire our own person and have our own friend doing the whole thing, like, maybe that would save money and give someone a job for six months. But the problem is, is you could do that, and you could kind of imitate the basic process. It's not that complicated, but, but then you'd be losing the the experience that they have doing this all over the country all the time, and the support network that that provides. So that's, that's what the board's looking at right now. So, good questions, thanks, Mike. I'm gonna move on, and if that's okay, just because we can go deeper, and we can come back privately afterwards if you want any of this. Brian and I will remain available, Mike as well, as long as y'all wanna chat. So, 10 and 10 was a dream that God gave to our leadership a couple of years ago. And the basic idea is, is God wants us to help start 10 new things all across the Chicago region to reach people with the gospel where gospel ministry is not currently thriving. So we're looking for pockets and places where the candle seems to be going out, or is struggling, and there's not a thriving ministry like ours present. So that's a key distinctive and filter for us. A year ago, I introduced to you that the district had come to us and said, there's a church on the west side of Chicago, the Belmont Craig Neighborhood, that's near the end. Four lovely ladies are all that are left, and they're doing their best, but that's all that they could do. And just fast-forward, we had a series of conversations with them. They considered their options, and they have officially voted to give to us everything they have, the campus and all the assets they have. So this is Trinity on Mead in Wrightwood. These ladies have done an impeccable job keeping the building in remarkably good order, although there's stuff that needs to be addressed and fixed. This is some of the interior shots in the sanctuary, beautiful structure. Anyone in the room, have you been there? Trinity on Mead in Wrightwood, Mike and a couple of us. There's been a few friends in the congregation who have come and said, I was baptized there, I was married there. I had a lady at McDonald's pull me aside on Monty Thursday and said, are you the pastor of St. Peter? And I'm like, yeah. She's like, I'm going to church at Our Savior for a first meeting over there. But I heard from a friend that I grew up with, that St. Peter and Trinity are having this conversation, and I'm so excited about that. I'm like, well, that's really cool, I'm gonna go eat my french fries. But we should talk later on, and so it was kind of a sweet moment. And so what the, the basic of this would be to say is, we've done some vetting of this campus property. We believe it's clean and in good enough order that we could, without significant risk, take possession of it. We've already set aside some significant seed money to help fund restoration and improvements to be able to then turn around and implement the plan we developed to start maybe four or five early childhood classrooms that serve the community there. Generates revenue, creates jobs for people that work there, so it's not coming out of our payroll or out of our books. It would be a self-sustaining program. We would simply manage it, oversee the campus, and provide vision and leadership for it. So at the meeting on Sunday, we'll ask the congregation to say yes to what they heard would be coming for quite some time, right? And we've been intentionally asking you to pray about and ask God's direction on this. If we try and it fails, we have the option to take the asset and sell it, recover any losses that we might have incurred from our investment, and the assets belong to St. Peter. What we've said to the district and to the congregation is, our intent is not to take that and pave our path anymore, right? It would be, if it doesn't work there, what we're saying is, any assets that are given to us from the city would stay in the city. And we would find some other way ourselves or working with others to invest that in. So I just wanna be very, very clear upfront that that's what our intent is at this time. But we have high optimism that it has the potential to be fruitful again, and lead to new relationships, and lead to new ministry. And eventually, the church might get started there, but we're not gonna have church services there for the long line, because we don't know anybody in the neighborhood to invite a church, so they're not just gonna show up. Some people asked, over the course of last year, Mike, does that mean you're gonna go be pastor there? The answer is no. If eventually, we get to a point where worship is starting there, which would be the ultimate goal, I might be part of a rotation that goes there once in a while. But this is my base, and will remain for as long as any of us can proceed. So some of you expressed some questions or concerns about that. Shouldn't be an issue, from what you guys are familiar with.
We researched...
We researched childcare licensing in the city of Chicago, and I say that because I've been told that's a very tough license to get.
It is, yeah.
Second thing is, you do know, we took a water sample from there a year ago. And you're allowed in your home to have eighty parts per billion of lead in your water.
Yep.
A school is allowed, that has childcare-
Yep.
For small children, is allowed to have five parts per billion. You can have eighty in your house, you can only have five in a school. And when we tested there, it was at fourteen out of the fountain to start with, and then after a flush, it was at six. I mean, we need to know-
Yes, it's hard to do, yeah.
I would like to see an outside company tell us what the needs are for this facility before we say yes. You know, I'm talking HVAC, I'm talking roof, uh, I just wanna know upfront.
Yep.
Um, somebody else could make it go, and I'm concerned about that.
Yep, good questions.
I wanna know that we're not just, to paint a classroom and to buy new furniture, it might not get us a license. I mean, we don't know what the city of Chicago wants for a childcare license, uh, we, there's a lot of research and homework that needs to be done. My second point is that we cannot stretch Jim Thomas any more than he's already stretched as the facility director here.
Yep.
And I think we all have to be concerned about that. How do I know? Well, I only work shoulder to shoulder with him-
Yep.
Uh, every day, so I know how he's stretched. Uh, our summer is packed. We talked about moving things in this building to be able to get more childcare.
Yep.
We talked about ice machines. Everything I mentioned is like a week. And I say that because, well, you talk to putting in new ice machines. Well, we've gotta run electric, we gotta run plumbing, we gotta be sure we got drains for various ice machines, there's a week. Everything we're setting up is a week, a week, a week, a week, a week, and there's only so many weeks in the summer. Be careful how much we stretch, Jim.
Yep, noted. He and I had a long talk after our staff meeting, the staff meeting, about this very subject. And I expressed intent to him, we'd say, Jim, uh, we don't want you to be overloaded by all these other opportunities that we're gonna, we've been talking about, including Trinity. Uh, we want you to be in a thriving position where you can be your best working. So my reference earlier to volunteering was a key part of that. There's also gonna be some other staffing, uh, investment we can make over the long term, as we look at this and other options, to make sure that none of our team are stretched through there. So, noted. And noted also, and we're in the process of doing some of those other environmental studies, and, and the, and the due diligence on the property, its deed, and, and all that. We have a lawyer from the city of Chicago, or works in the city of Chicago, uh, who is working pro bono on this. Uh, she's a member of Trinity Lutheran Church at Lyle, which did essentially the same thing for one, but it's like point nine to one, you know, in terms of similarity, uh, in terms of what we're looking at as well. So she's gonna be very helpful to us as well. So we'll continue to work on that. What I can say is, we are, uh, we have eighteen, almost, maybe there's two more that are really thinking about it, twenty, eighteen to twenty congregations who have been willing to say we are gonna be financially committed to launching Link Chicago, which is a friend of St. Peter, whose expertise is finding local leaders in the city and mentoring, training them to help start new ministries to reach their communities with gospel, okay? So in my conversations with the executive director of Link, who preached here in January, so if you remember him, Fitz Parks, uh, he said, Mike, I don't see any reason why we're not gonna go forward with this in twenty nineteen. Like, the funding is there, there's more that we can raise, we're working on that. But ninety thousand dollars to date has been committed by these eighteen congregations, all at very low, right? Uh, and, and Link is very excited about that. The district is happy to see it happening. Onboarded directors from districts, so I may not see those conversations. Uh, so yes, they would be there, uh, we, I don't know which one would come first, you know? So one of the things we proposed to Link is having that be their home base to get started. And so there'd be an office thing that they'd have available, and that'd be a natural relationship to develop as well. The, uh, in the next part, I'm gonna talk about the One Church Initiative, there's also another, uh, relationship that we're cultivating. Uh, the One Church Initiative would be another Ten in Ten option that has kind of, uh, come to the table. This is five or six suburban Lutheran churches, most of whom have early childhood or childcare centers, uh, who are looking at coming together as, and acting and living as one church for a season of time to help ensure that ministry thrives in each place represented, right? So four or five, uh, of these places are struggling to get bodies, struggling to call a pastor, struggling to keep a pastor, struggling to figure out how to connect and serve a community. Most of them have early childhood centers that are doing pretty well, actually. They include, this is a secret, so I can just tell you, they include, we're talking with Grace Lutheran Church in Northbrook, uh, they have Seeds of Grace Childcare Center, uh, which has gotten started the last few years and is doing tremendously well. They would be our best friend to help start something new in Chicago, so somebody else was asking about that, because they've just done it, not in Chicago proper, but within Cook County, and all the way down to childhood, taking a older facility, upgrading it, bringing it up to code, and that kind of thing. So the director there would be excited to help us with this. Living Christ in Arlington Heights does not have a childcare or early childhood, they have their Pause to Play program. Our Redeemer Prospect Heights, Faith Lutheran Church in Arlington Heights in the South Side of Drax. And another one, Crossing Crown Lutheran Church, uh, which is on the ramp, it's technically an independent, formerly A A L C church that's in talks with faith about forming a relationship. These are all the ones that have sat around the table and said, what if we all came together, uh, shared staffing, leadership and support, so that we could support one another and help the ministry thrive? And we're excited to kind of develop those plans out and roll those forward in the, in the months and years to come. One of them, I'm saying, specifically has just started childcare to preschool in the last three or five years. And so is willing to share their playbook and whatever they've learned with us to help us do the same thing at Trinity. So, uh, we're in that conversation right now. So two, two things I would say, what we have sensed and what we have come to be convinced is, God's calling us as a church to go first, but never alone, right? So we're willing to take bold first steps, uh, but we're always looking for friends who'll come along with us and share the load and be supporters and partners in that as well. Mike, I see your hand.
Yeah, you said something about we set aside some seed money.
That's gonna come back a little bit later on in, in Brian's talk, but, uh, our foundation has set aside almost two hundred thousand dollars in seed money for Ten in Ten initiatives out of earnings from our various endowments over the last two years. So we've been using some of that to start funding for Link, we'll use some of that for Trinity, and then we'll save some of that also for other things, we're not gonna just go spend all of it. But that's been a great way to set aside earnings for this kind of occasion.
Yep. What would we need to cost?
Uh, our initial estimate, this is just a real thumbnail schedule, is it would be in a range of a hundred to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars infrastructure, facilities, upgrades, you're talking about the plumbing, et cetera, there's HVAC stuff, there's pumps down in an electric room, there's just cosmetic improvements. The L C E F would love to provide some financing for that, and then we, uh, to help us out, we're excited about this, uh, it would be a smaller chunk, not a big multimillion dollar sort of note. Uh, and the plan would be then, that the revenues from program would pay the fees for that. So we might front some upfront costs for some, uh, personnel and some other marketing research and et cetera, but our hope would be not to just drop that two hundred thousand dollars into building improvements.
So how quickly would the program start?
As soon as D C F S licensing is secured and the building's ready. So it could be probably in a six to twelve month range, just speaking of the D C F S process in the city of Chicago, that's what we're being told. So if we work with Seeds of Grace, uh, Northbrook, uh, our initial proposal to them, as we're sharing staffing and resources and partnering together in various ways, would be, if we free you up in this, that, and the other area, would you be willing to service our director? Which is essentially sitting in a chair waiting for D C F S to come in, do their things. You don't have to get paid necessarily to do that, because you're already getting paid to do this over here, but that provides us with the leader to get it started, and then we can afford without it costing us a whole lot of anything. So that's part of the conversation right now.
So what would we be voting on?
Uh, accepting the offer from Trinity Mead to give us their property assets.
That'd be budgeting, supporting.
Uh, not at this point in time. So what we've said is, will they, uh, they've said, we will give this to you, and then we will dissolve, close as a congregation, and they'll become members of other area churches. And then we'll, we can, we can share some of our, some of what I've just shared with you, you know, at that meeting as well, say, here's what our plan is right now, here's what we think it'll cost, uh, and here's kind of reports, you know, to whatever we have at that time, uh, to put up in front of you.
And to be clear, with Trinity Mead, we don't intend on using any of our operational funding toward that, it would be kind of its own P and L. The only investment we would make is some of our time, leadership time, congregational, volunteer time, and then some of the seed money that's already set aside for that. So we don't see it necessarily eating into or making a dent in our operations here, uh, or affecting us in that way.
Yeah, thanks for that, I appreciate it, David. Good question. Took a look at that. Yeah, Pat's?
You mentioned, um, in relationship to Twenty, to Trinity Mead, four or five early childhood classrooms, do they already have those, or would we be starting them?
They have classroom space, they used to have school, they have a gymnasium, they have sanctuary, a number of offices. It's a fairly compact campus. Uh, the classrooms themselves need work to get cleaned up and reconfigured to be what they'd wanna be. There's a second story that has three or four classrooms. We would not anticipate using them for early childhood initially, uh, mostly because you'd need to have an elevator installed to get them up and down two stairs, and that's not gonna be something we wanna invest in right away. So the initial plan would be to say, clean up, fix up, get ready, these four to five rooms, uh, we think we can start with that, build a program off of that, and then grow it if and when and how it makes sense to grow it, based on what the community desire is for, for that kind of, uh, program. Uh, the upper stair, the upstairs things could be used for any number of things. Link, we talked about that, office thing out of there, could also be used for an after-school program for nearby students, uh, and other things that might emerge as we get into that again. Okay?
All right, moving into a financial update, I'm gonna be mindful of our time, so I'll give you kind of a high level overview, and then we can answer any questions you may have about that. So what's being handed out right now is a one-page overview, uh, the, it gives the last two years' results, where we ended up, the last two fiscal years, and then it has a column that shows where we're at for this year, budget versus what we forecast ending up at. And then there's a nineteen, two thousand nineteen, twenty budget that we'll be proposing at the voters' meeting, that's where the vote will happen on that. So kind of a high level overview of, of where we're at this year for twenty eighteen, nineteen. Uh, we are forecasting a deficit before depreciation of about sixty thousand dollars. There's still a few variables within that that could move positively, and so we would hope to see that number move more towards zero as we get toward the end of June. Uh, we are tracking a little bit behind in our budget of giving. Uh, Christmas caught us all the way up to budget, and then Easter was another great weekend that caught us up, and now we're a little bit behind. So we need some strong giving to close on budget for giving for this year. Uh, our scholarship fundraising, just wanted to point out, with the change to variable tuition for the school, this scholarship program does not exist anymore, so now we're transitioning that kind of repackaging it as our annual fund. So you'll see some opportunities to show generosity to that fund. So if you see this logo out there, that's what that's about. It still does the same thing, accomplishes helping families that need some support, uh, who wanna attend here and wouldn't otherwise be able to financially. So there'll be some opportunities for you to be generous toward that in the coming months. We are in a stable cash position for the summer. In other years, we've had to access lines of credit, uh, or some loans to get us by in the summer until tuition kicks back in, in the fall. Due to a number of reasons, we won't have to do that this summer, so that's a great thing to have. And then another thing I wanted to point out is that our St. Peter Foundation has just been a huge benefit and blessing to our ministry over the last two years. Uh, it's been a good stretch for the, the stock market, and so we've reaped some of the benefits of that in our ministry as well. So I just wanted to give you a quick overview of some of the things that we've been able to do and support through some of those funds. So in the last two years, from June two thousand seventeen to now, we've given out almost nine hundred thousand dollars that have been granted, uh, mostly just from foundation earned instead of coming from the, the funds that are invested there. Some of the things that that has supported, uh, Laoram funding in our school, these are things that are over and above operations. So it's funded things like technology, our counseling program, fine arts, and curriculum We've been able to address a number of issues in some of our classrooms with asbestos flooring, um, fixing up some of the furniture, ceilings, fans, uh, lighting, and just really making those classrooms shine like new. So seventy-five thousand dollars from the foundation has gone toward that effort. School marketing, we've been able to get our name out there, promote some of the things that we're doing, uh, and get new families in through some of the school marketing funding from the foundation, uh, to contribute to scholarships while helping families that wouldn't otherwise be able to attend. Uh, security upgrades, we had a generous donation from a member, uh, and then the foundation was able to match that, and so put those two together, and we were able to do some significant security upgrades over the last year for our church and school. This room here, we were able to do some upgrades for worship, uh, we had some additional lighting features, new light board, speakers, and then the window shades that you see behind us here. So that's really helped to enhance the worship experience in here. Exterior improvements, landscaping, we were able to build a new shed that's used for athletics and other things outside, um, so some good improvements on the exterior as well. We started a building fund, uh, just looking ahead to creating some reserves for future building repairs and projects that come up. So that's a great step, and first step toward, uh, doing that. Operational funding, so a little over a year ago, we created an operational endowment. And what that means is the fund of this endowment are not restricted. So we can use those just for ongoing operations of the church and school. And so ninety-six thousand dollars, just in the last two years, that we've been able to get from that. Uh, that's a huge blessing to have that third source of revenue for the church and school that we didn't have before.
So some of you will remember in years past, we'd have a struggle where we'd be having a budget challenge, and we said, well, what about the foundation or the endowments? We have all this money, but we can't use it over here, uh, because it's restricted to this, that, or the other specific use, or it's principal can't be touched. So the governing board, uh, working with the foundation board about a year ago, said, you know, what if we were to create, we had an initial gift that was waiting to be used, what if we created a new fund, uh, specifically to kind of bridge that gap, where principal was not permanently restricted? In fact, some of it would be spent, uh, where and when needed, and would give guaranteed revenues for ongoing operations that don't have any limits on it, so can go into the budget, can pay for salaries and lights and so on and so forth. Um, and the board said, that's a great idea, let's go ahead and do it. God bless that tremendously, we've had over a million, almost a million, two, uh, come in since then and go straight into that fund. That's our first priority with new estate gifts and requests to come in. The target is to reach a principal, uh, gift fund size of two-point-five million dollars, which would put it on par with Laoram and ahead of the church endowment. Uh, and then we reconsider, you know, future gifts, you know, where do they go? Now, these are unrestricted, by the way, so if it's got a designation or restriction on it, that's always on. Okay? But, uh, we're just tremendously excited about how this will provide sustainable ongoing revenue for ministry into the future. And, uh, God bless.
South Africa, we've been able to support some of the construction efforts that they've done there to the tune of eighty thousand dollars. Uh, as we mentioned, the Ten in Ten seed money, we've set aside almost two hundred thousand dollars toward that effort, and that'll only be used for that. Our national youth gathering, there's twenty-five total people going this year, where Kristin and her team are excited about that, and the foundation was able to help cover some of the costs of those students and leaders to go. Uh, staff continuing education, so three of our staff members have been pursuing their master's degrees in education in different ministry fields, and there's a specific fund that helps fund, uh, things just like that, so that's been a blessing as well. And then we hosted a leadership training, uh, cohort here this year, and four of our own staff were able to attend, to attend through that, and that's been, just been another blessing to help our people grow in their leadership. So that gives you a little glimpse of what our foundation has been, been able to do and to contribute to over the last two years. So just know that if, if you're one of the people who have a planned gift, um, that gift helps ministry for years and generations to come, so we thank you for that. Uh, and if you're interested in learning more about that, we'd be more than happy to talk to you about that and help get, get it set up as well. So then moving into our financial update for this year, uh, looking at the forecast versus budget, a few things to point out. So then moving into our financial update for this year, looking at the forecast versus budget, a few things to point out. Again, the ties and offerings, we hope to still come in at budget. That's going to take some strong giving, but we believe that our people are generous and that God will provide. Tuition and fees are just tracking slightly behind what we budgeted, but as you'll see for next year, we're making a jump with some strong enrollment there. Extended care and our summer camp programs, as we mentioned, have been really growing, doing well, and that comes with some added revenue as well. So $35,000 more is expected from those programs than what we budgeted in this year. Scholarships, which is transitioning to the annual fund, we're a little bit behind in that this year as well. So if you'd still like to contribute to that, there's an opportunity to do that and help support families that attend the school here. And then applied foundation grants, what we just mentioned, that's been a huge blessing. Some of those show up here in the budget, just because they're hitting items that were already in our budget, and we were able to cover those with foundation funding. On the expense side, there's a few things to point out. The church salaries and benefits, we did have the full-time pastor position in for this year, and obviously didn't end up filling that yet. On the school side, we needed to invest in a few classrooms. There were some insurance costs that were unexpected that brought us over budget in that area. And then on the ministry support side, we invested in a few positions, increasing or new positions that were needed as we assessed what the need was of the overall ministry. So that's where you see that number being $39,000 above budget as well. So that all brings us to total expenses of about $100,000 more than what was budgeted, equalling the $60,000 deficit before depreciation for this year. So any questions on this year's kind of forecasts or budget before we move on to looking at 2019, 20? All right, so then looking at our budget that we'll be proposing on the 19th, kind of a unique thing that we haven't done often before is we'll be, actually be proposing a deficit budget for 2019, 20. And our thinking and discussion on that was that this is a year to invest in ministry and not to cut back. So in our discussions as staff, with the board, we felt like the options of trying to balance the budget and having to cut staff and people and programs to do that, the effects of that would not be worth having a balanced budget, especially with new school leadership coming in and all the great things that we kind of have in the pipeline. So we'll be proposing a budget that assumes a deficit of about $98,000 before depreciation. As I mentioned, we do have really strong enrollment and tuition for next year, so we're hopeful that the numbers reflected here may even go up a little bit. We're tracking well ahead of where we were this time last year with our enrollments. We hope that that trend continues, and we have strong tuition that backs that up. We also had the second full-time pastor still included in this budget. Just looking at as a call committee and a staff, at the timing of that, we have it in for October. Trying to be realistic with where we are in the timeframe, not having a ton of names that we've received yet. And so we still want that reflected in there, but we felt like October would be a more realistic start date for that position. There's an estimated 9% healthcare cost increase, which is just a factor that we need to be mindful of and careful about as our costs continue to increase in that area. And then within this budget, we're offering a 2% cost of living increase to all of our staff as well. Ties and offerings, so next budget year assumes a small increase from what we budgeted in this year, and so strong giving is assumed in that budget. As I mentioned, tuition and fees, we're looking really strong in that area. This number may even go up higher. The other income area, there is some ten and ten income reflected in there from some of the shared staffing and the expenses that would be funded through other churches through that. And then on the expense side, the church salary and benefits, like I mentioned, we do have the full-time pastor in there. Some of my time is moved over into that area as I work more in discipleship. And then in the school side, we have some insurance costs and increased staffing in a few areas that bump that number up as well. So any questions on anything I shared about the budget for next year?
As you think about it, one thing I'll jump in and say is, in the ten years or so that I've been in this role, first in 2009, I've appointed interim, and then officially 2010, we've never presented a budget with deficit, land deficit. So it's kind of a little different moment than we've had in the past. As Ryan said, you know, through the staff and the boards, we discussed this a lot. We presented a number of scenarios to the board and said, if we want to get this down to black ink, here's how we'd do it. Here's where we would make reductions in personnel headcount, positions changing, et cetera. And like I said, or like Ryan said, we said, we don't feel that this is the time for that. What is also true is around this time of year, we usually come in with a forecast that says, we think we're going to come up a little behind. You guys are familiar with this. And then through careful spending and/or God's blessing, through additional giving, we most often come out actually in a black before depreciation, with a few exceptions. A couple of years ago, we had one off year, but by and large, we've done, okay, God has been good. This year, I'm optimistic that we can continue to work that forecasted deficit down, and I'm even confident that next year we can outperform in some of our revenue areas and be more controlled in some of our expenses that is reflected here. So we're saying that this is what we think is the best plan for now, but we think we can do better than it, and the impact will be less negative. But we all agree as the leadership that we'd rather present this, ask approval on it, and try to beat it, than it would be to say, okay, let's go ahead and start reducing staff in various places to try to have a balanced budget. So the unique position that we're in, I think is the best and the wisest position given circumstances, especially looking at transition to next year in our school, where the bulk of our staffing expenses are, and saying, we've got a new principal coming in, we want to give him all the options. And then we'll see how this next year goes, some of our marketing admissions efforts, how that continues to go at the fourth there. So I'll stop at that.
Does the mortgage payment come out of the general fund?
The interest comes out of the general fund. The principal comes out of special gifts that are received throughout the course of the year. So mortgage, the mortgage initiative ongoing, and then out of other general net proceeds that we have year after year. So if in the last eight years, we've had several years in the black, some of that cash then gets spent out from the balance sheet towards the principal.
What's the principal?
Principal amount currently, maybe $120,000 somewhere. Oh, I'm sorry, the total, $2.4, $2.3 million.
I know it's not part of the budget, but again, we don't talk about it. It's still hanging out there.
Yeah, yep.
It should be kind of reflected here.
The interest expense is the, that half of the payment.
I mean, the whole thing.
Yeah, so in GAAP counting, your principal payment doesn't show up in your P and L or your budget or something, so it's a...
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, you know, we need to talk about, we still have this principal out there, regardless of how we're paying for it, we're still paying for it.
Yes.
I know you talked about earlier about, let's eliminate that, and if we know more about it, maybe we would focus on that. Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So it's been a lot of information, a lot to consider. Appreciate your time, your energy, and this evening. Let's go ahead and wrap up the formal part of the conversation, then if you want to come up and have more specific questions, like I said, we'll be here for that. But let's close by praying the Lord's Prayer again. Our Father, who art in heaven, how would be thy name? Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory, forever and ever. All right, thanks, friends. One more town hall meeting next week, Wednesday, noon 30, in a sanctuary, I think, right? And then, and then the 19th, that's when the meeting will be. We don't, for a fact, don't be in a sanctuary. Okay, have a good night.